Okay. We are back again with Kevin Jones, my, my good friend who I've, I've only met several times, but I must say I, I, there's a kinship between he and I. And uh, he enjoys the podcast as well as I enjoy doing them. So we're, we're going to make this a, make this an everyday or every week thing maybe. Or we're gonna try and build it up where we have an audience. How's that? What do you think of that?
I think that sounds like fun.
I think so too. I think, I think we might be on to something there. Okay, Kevin was just about to share a story with me about um, something in Kentucky Nob. So while we're recording, we might as well start off there.
Yeah, I went to a dinner and uh, you know, a mixture of folks from out of town and from folks who are from around town. And someone asked me, you know, what I thought about having such a, a, a large attraction in our mountains as far as Nemecola Woodlands and the uh, and the casino. And one of the questions I asked back was that, you know, I believe this place is amazing. I mean, we're bringing in international guests, not just people from all across the nation. And, but my question back was, did you have a chance to kind of like leave the grounds? And enjoy any of our local scenes? And they naturally said, yes, they went to Fallingwater and yes, they've gone to Kentucky Nob. And as our conversation grew, I said, what, what do you need as a guest? Right? In order to have the knowledge of local restaurants and other local activities that might interest you? And they said, well, you know, we really don't have a resource. Like we, we looked around on the internet, but there was really no resource to tell us what was going on. And I said, if you had in your hotel room, just a, a simple card, not the old fashioned three fold pamphlet that people tend to ignore, but just a simple card with like a QR code on it um, or a website on it that gave you a single point of contact where you could just go to that single website and then pull down local restaurants. And then it would pull down all the family owned restaurants. And you could kind of divide it. And that was the idea that I was floating back and forth with them was to be able to say, hey, if you knew about some of the cool activities, you know, around our county, would you go? Would you go? Cause you're not from here. And I said, I believe that Google Maps is gonna get you wherever you wanna go. I said, I know it sure works good for me. But if you had that single access, would you actually take the time to look at it? And say, hey, maybe there's other fun things to do around here that I need to think about? Or maybe there's a fun place to go eat? And they said, they said, yeah, well, we do that all the time. And I said, well, where have you done that? And they said, oh, well, we travel to Europe. We do that. We love to go to a, a small family owned place. I'm like, we have small family owned places that are pretty cool here too. And you don't even have to go to Europe to find them. And they said, we just didn't know. We didn't, we didn't understand. And I said, well, is there any place that you did go visit? I mean, they said, well, we went to Texas Roadhouse. Of course. And I said, well, how did you find it? And she said, well, we just typed it into Google and it popped up right away. And I said, I imagine it did that because it's a, you know, more nationwide organization and they have a little bit more power. And she said, yeah, I would guess that too.
Well, let me, let me uh, give an example of, of, of the power of Google and the way Google works for restaurants anyway. I get contact from Google all the time to see if I want to advertise and, and, and for, for steak houses, which would be with the Texas Roadhouse. And they use, they cite for example, the Texas Roadhouse. And would I like to be first or second? If I would pay, hmm, it takes a amount of dollars, like, like three hundred dollars a month.
Oh, so that's.
Well, but see, that's the thing. This is what happens whenever like to, to, to utilize the things like Google or Yelp or things like that uh, in Fayette County. They charge the same rates that they would in Allegheny County or in San Francisco. Or I mean, the rates are a blanket rate across the country. So you know, if I want to pay, if I live, if I were in, if I were in Portland, Oregon and I paid three hundred dollars a month, that'd be a pittance for, to, to give me first in, in my, you know, on Google. But for me to pay three hundred dollars a month, when there's only a handful of steak houses and I might only get several people, it's not worth me to pay three hundred dollars a month. And yet it's, that's with a contract, not like, not a one time deal. It's, it's three hundred a month and in like a three year contract. So.
Then, then there's just no way that um, privately owned businesses can take advantage of that resource. That's why I think.
Not around here.
I would argue that there's not many places in this country that a privately owned place could pull that off.
Oh, I don't know. If you were in a city or a college town or something where you, all you.
Oh, sure. Like in, oh, but there's plenty of small guys probably in Morgantown, Big Ten school that still couldn't afford that. Three hundred dollars a month.
Probably not.
Yeah. I just um, nice cute little places owned by a family that lives down the street. But their kids play at the local high school and go to the local schools and are part of the local community. I would argue that they don't have three thousand, you know, three hundred dollars a month to spend for three years.
Yeah. If you, if you had a one time shot to advertise like for Christmas parties or something like that, or that's one thing. But, but if you're talking.
But if you had a single website just for Fayette County where you have one stop, you know exactly where to go as a visitor and it's easy to navigate and it shows all the local businesses, all the local activities. I just think that you would also feel as though your tax dollars were working in your best interest.
Like the Fayette Gazette or something.
It just, and it doesn't even have to be that fancy. It really doesn't even have to be that fancy. You know, the smaller the URL, the probably better off you are, especially if somebody has to type it in. But I would be curious to find out if that's single three hundred dollars a month would be able to push that individual website for every one of those business owners.
Yeah.
For every single one of those business owners, no matter who they are. And you can divide that site by the simple interest that you have. And I just, I think we're missing opportunities when it comes to the internet culture. Because we have to also understand that those individuals who are, who are coming to visit our county at Ohio Powell and they're coming to visit uh, Fallingwater, Kentucky Nob, they're coming to the casino or to uh, Nemecola Woodlands, they have a method of egress on their way home. And it may in fact be right down the 119 corridor. It may be right down 43, heading towards 68. It may, you know what I mean? Like there's.
You mean up here where, I always said that the 119 corridor where, where uh, the Laurel Mall and Hardy Airport. I was referred to as the Laurel and Hardy Corridor.
Well, and the, I, uh, the, the joke notwithstanding, we, we are in a position where we could take a bigger advantage of that.
Yeah.
We could, we could take a bigger advantage of that. And I just, I think that it, it doesn't require much. It's, it's a thought process change. It's not necessarily a fiduciary change. You know, like we're not discussing uh, big bucks here. We're not talking about big money here. Um, we're not talking about any enormous expenditure of tax dollars. We're talking about a structural change in how we perceive the issue in order to try and solve it. That's all. We're not, we're not trying to go out on a limb here. We're talking about creating pretty simple webpages that are not really that complicated.
Alright.
And really honestly, by having that single point of contact, then if you're having a special event, then you can be in a position to also push that special event through that site. And if you're a community in Fayette County and you have a special event, you can also push it through that. When I traveled to Wales and Germany with my family, we stumbled into all kinds of cool things that were community oriented events. And there weren't a lot of tourists there, but the tourists who were there were incredibly welcomed by the community. I ended up stumbling into a big hog roast right outside of a castle in Wales. And my son looks at it and is like, hey, we're back home. We just traveled all the way over to England and we're back home. This is good old fashioned hog roast. And I said, yeah, that's what we just did. We literally traveled all the way to England to go back to Fayette County. And it was beautiful and the people were amazing. They're like, hey, why are you here? And I'm like, cause I smelled pig roasting. And I was like, this, I'm following my nose. Something cool is down this road. And the, so we just walked on down and sure you know, there was like a whole little community festival where people dressed and having a good time. And I said, you know, we do that too. I really want to introduce someone from a different part of the country to St. Rita's Fair. And tell them straight out, you're about to have some really amazing food. Okay. End of story. You're about to stumble into the coolest thing you've ever had. It's gonna be amazing food. You're gonna have a great time. And to have them come down to St. Nick's in Brownsville and have pierogies with grandma's fingerprints still in them. You know, like a real handmade pierogi. And just watch their eyes light up because lots, lots, lots of people would think that would be really fun to stop and do. More people than we give credit.
I serve pierogies here and I, I, I get, I, you know, surprisingly, I get a lot of people from out of town, out of country that come here that stay at the Melody at the road or, or the town of Cobblestone in Connelsville. And both places, thank you very much, refer, refer the guests come out here for something to eat many nights. So I've had people from Denmark, China, Japan, Spain, uh, uh, and then not speaking English.
Sure.
Uh, all of them. Uh, one time I had a table full of architects from Denmark and only one spoke English. They were all, all uh, all Danes and, and uh, they loved this place. And we, I was able to, I sat with them and through the one, one young lady who, who is bilingual, we were able to communicate. She was a translator. And it was a great time. And they never heard of a pierogi.
Okay. So now we'll get down.
But they loved that.
Okay. So now we'll do something controversial. Okay. Cause this is serious now. Sour cream or no sour cream?
For me?
Yeah. Sour cream on your pierogies or not? Okay. This is controversial.
You know, I think I, I usually go half and half. I, I'll eat some, I like to go ha- eat half with them and half without. I'm one of those guys that if I get a, it's Thanksgiving, I eat one thing at a time. And I, I, I start with the thing I like, I like the least and I'll eat that first. And then I'll, so let's say I start, you know, I, I must start with the, the cauliflower, uh, go through into the, the mashed potatoes, turkey stuffing, end up with the asparagus.
Ah, see, I, I, I'm literally the guy who looks at a server and says, uh, do you know that amount of sour cream that's like incredibly unhealthy that you really don't wanna serve me? That's how much I want. Okay. I want that much sour cream.
I like sour cream.
I want sour cream all over my pierogies, all over. And people just look at me and they're like, you're one of those guys. You're the sour cream guy. And I'm like, yeah, I'm the sour cream guy. Like I want sour cream on my pierogi. I don't know. How, I guess how I was raised.
I didn't realize there was a sour cream, non-sour cream debate.
Yes, there is. I've gotten it a million times. I'm, well, you know, how many different food place, you know, uh, different churches I'm going to. And uh, yeah, and the smart candidate, hey, I'll write a book someday, just so you know. I will write a book someday about all the fun places to go. So that I just recently, and the church will remain nameless, their polishki was so unbelievably good that I literally looked at the ladies and said, if I told people where I was eating this and then said that yours was amazing, they probably wouldn't vote for me because I didn't tell them theirs was amazing. Okay. Because you're just like, this was out of this world. It was so good. I had a look at my wife and she's like, shush, shush. And I'm like, I just can't stop talking about this. It was that good. And I was, so she's like, you gotta be careful. She said, people won't vote for you. And I'm like, okay, I'll be a good boy. I'll try. But yeah, you, you be like every, I don't know. And then, and then you go to the next car show and you're like, hey, these are pretty cool. Like, oh, I forgot to campaign. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the cars. Like I forgot to, hi, by the way, my name's Kevin Jones and I'm running for county commissioner. Hi.
Tell me about your campaigning. Uh, what have you been, well, you came in and you were, you were telling me how you run ragged today already.
Yeah, it's um, I uh, you know, right now I'm in that phase where I'm trying to make sure before we get into those last two months to stop and see a lot of those people that were so important to me in, in the campaign. And I, I know this sounds strange to people because they're, I'm sure they're seeing other things out there on the campaign trail. But I just wanted to take this week to go say thank you. You know, like I felt there were people who were just so important to get through the primary. You know, like at that stage and have been so kind throughout the summer. And I just, I'm, I was fearful that things were gonna get so incredibly busy from this week on that if I didn't take time to say thank you now, that I was going to miss that opportunity and not be the guy that I am. You know, like that's just what I wanted to do. And so that's what I've been doing. I've been, and I started a little bit last week just to go and say, hi, thanks. You know, I, I know that I'm going to be asking you to talk to more of your neighbors. I know that I'm going to be asking you to speak to more people you know. And I thank you for what you've already done. And I don't want to be the guy who forgets that little tiny piece of just making sure that I'm appreciated. You know, that's the piece I don't wanna miss.
Yeah, grassroots.
It, it is grassroots and.
But I wanna ask a question. I, I've, you know, I.
I mean, next week I'm starting doors game.
Okay. How confident, now that you've been past the primary and well into the, the next, next level, next process, how confident are you that uh, you're going to be elected?
I don't wake up that way in any way, shape or form. I mean, I, yeah, I don't know if that's in me. I honestly don't know if that's in me. All I know is that each day I have to work my butt off. Because I, okay, so I joke, but it's just not joking. This is the longest job interview of my entire life. That's really what this is. This is the longest job interview. And if I don't treat every conversation and every moment and every time that I walk out the door in my house or every phone call like it is an interview.
Or you're.
Then, then I'm doing a disservice to people I'm asking to vote for me.
It's like an engagement to the people of Fayette County. You're, you're trying to be married to this county and this is just an engagement.
And that continues after the election.
Of course.
That does not stop.
Well, marriage is, the courting process must go on.
And it's, I'm, you know, I, I just finished my, an editorial, uh, you know, letter to the editor uh, for the Herald Standard. And one of the things I specifically said in here is that it is my intention to be selected Fayette County Commissioner by Democrats, independents and Republicans. All across the board. Because I am responsible to each and every one of those people. And that's, and, and I will continue to be responsible. Because a person in that position has to be able to say in certain, in certain circumstances, this is not necessarily my opinion. But I am a representative.
You're the man for the job, the representative.
Yeah. I, I represent these individuals. And I need you to understand that here in this community, this is what they're saying and this is what they're communicating to me. And these are their needs and we have to listen to them. We absolutely have to listen to them.
Well, that's refreshing, man, to hear that from you because politics, anything you see now on every level is, is nothing, it doesn't represent, nobody's being represented anymore except for, I think, like social factions and then things, there's nothing to do with, with the needs of the people as much as what, how, what the people want out of, out of, how to be recognized or something. And it's, 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 it's not the same, like the political process doesn't, doesn't, isn't doing what it should do anymore.
There are certain areas of our county that desperately need flood relief. Okay? Um, people will talk about, oh, this storm was um, freakish or abnormal. And I'm like, but we had two that month. And it's still a problem that's hanging out there. These are real people's homes who will have to disclose that flooding if they sell it. That can simply be searched on the internet today that it was. Um, you, you can't push them in a situation, you know, that they watch their property value reduce. You have to help them mediate this.
Alright.
And I even said months and months ago, in the Herald Standard, months and months ago, that, you know, there are certain elements that are in a plan uh, that Governor Wolf is proposing with Restore Pennsylvania that has uh, the opportunity to mediate that problem. But there's also a bill that was floated by Senator Stephan. And I looked at both and I was looking at people saying, yeah, I really don't care which one passes. I don't care if the Republican bill passes. I don't care if the Democratic bill passes. We're gonna use it. End of story. Okay. It's not a partisan thing. They both have solutions contained inside them. Let's use that solution. And that's it. Like I, I don't see why that has to be a partisan issue. It, it shouldn't be a partisan issue. The solution is the issue. Let's just take whatever we need and make a solution for it.
Yeah. Too many people are getting squeezed out of their lives because they're caught in the middle of, of a, a political type of war anymore.
I'm not interested. I mean, it's, I don't know what else to say. Like I literally look at people and say, yeah, I am not interested in these type of wars. I'm interested in the solution. That's it. There is a mediated, negotiated solution in the middle between the two parties. Talk. Talk to each other. Find the middle. Do it. Do it.
This is why I, I like Kevin. He, he cuts to the point and he makes sense.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to claim with some rose colored glasses. That's gonna be.
I'm the one wearing the rose colored glasses.
You are actually. That's right. The uh, but I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at it from that position that um, yeah, sure, voices are gonna raise. Um, faces are gonna turn red and then you make a discuss, you know, you, you uh, you make a general solution that affects the most number of people in the best possible way and you move on to the next issue. You know, it's like, it ends up being like a barber shop and somebody yells out the door next. What's the next problem? Let's do it. Um, because I can no longer, there's an, there was an old joke that a friend of mine and I had when we were in college. Cause if both of us have worn beards our entire lives since we were nineteen. And we were talking about some of our first opportunities for employment. And he looked at me and he said, I don't know if I wanna work for somebody who's not gonna let me have a beard. Like there's plenty of people out there who are gonna let me wear a beard and work there and I'll do just fine. And I'll be an incredible employee. And they're gonna find that our work ethic is amazing. And that we're, and that I'm going to increase the general productivity of everyone around me.
So is this a discriminatory issue or was it, or just because?
It was strange because we were in that position as young men. We had tailored beards at that time. And I've gone different lengths. You can see it on my Facebook. But the uh, different jobs allow different lengths, I should say. But the uh, I, I uh, I said, yeah, let's rest assured that. That if, if, we're not gonna end up working at Disney World where we're not allowed to wear a beard. Unless you're, I think what, there's like some strange rule. You, uh, men aren't allowed to have a beard unless they're working on the Pirates of the Caribbean ride. Something like that. You know, yeah, like there's weird, strange rules. And uh, I said, yeah, so we'll find those places that like us for who we are and our resumes and our, you know, our experiences and then move on from that. But I, I look at the, the county in that same perspective to say, you know, there are going to be people that Fayette County is not to their taste. Right? And they're not gonna be, and they're not gonna be able to see all of the little hidden gems that we have. And they're not gonna be able to see the positivity and they're only gonna look at the negative. Well, I'm like, my job's to do both if I'm county commissioner. Highlight the gems and then address the issues.
Sure.
Cause I wanted to ask you, I mean, when you, when you're looking, you know, what do you, what's your number one concern? Absolute number one concern.
My number one concern for what I think Fayette County needs?
Yeah. And you know, and to be honest, I think that you should split it as a businessman and as, as a person. What are your two?
Good paying jobs and educating our workforce to be able to take advantage of that.
So one of my continuing issues, you know, as a ex educator, um, in a family of educators is the idea that I came to the realization that we're not being honest enough with our kids and adults. There are a lot of statistics that have been around since the eighties that keep changing the playing field and saying that you may have between seven or 11 jobs in a lifetime. And some of those may even be different careers.
Right, right.
I'm very concerned that we're not bold enough to be honest with people. To say, you need to be, we are no longer living in a world where you have a job for 40 years.
Right.
That is, that was commonplace for our fathers and our grandfathers, but it is no longer commonplace. In fact, the opposite is common. Where you're, you're going to have multiple jobs. So you have to be flexible and you have to continue your own education as you go down.
Continue learning.
You have to continue learning.
Uh, I had a discussion on Facebook with a bunch of people that didn't quite get at first and quite understand what I was trying to put across when I did it. With, you know, somehow Facebook can be, you know, you don't, people don't realize what you, what your intent is on things often when you say something. But I, I um, I, I, I quoted my father who's, who used to say, uh, when he first moved to this area, you could, well, he was from this area. When you moved back to this area, he went to Cleveland. He said, there were so many jobs around here. You could have, have a good, good paying job, quit it, walk up the street and start another one and they could, and there were three waiting for you.
Yes.
And now there's a lot of jobs in Fayette County. But they're not good paying. Don't get me wrong. They're not the kind of jobs where you can, you can sustain a, a life with a vacation and, and raise a family and, and buy a home. But even the, the jobs, it's hard to find people to, to work the jobs because they either, they're better off staying on assistance because they can live a better lifestyle or they can't pass drug tests.
We are also in this scenario where some of the people are working more than one job because the job is so low paying.
This is what I'm, I'm trying to get at.
And it's, it's, we're in that, you know, hey, I'm a Democrat. I'm a union guy, ex-union president. So when it comes to the idea of, of family sustaining jobs, my brain has been raised and built.
Now the unions don't stand for the Democrats anymore.
Uh, and it depends on the, it's union by you.
Oh, okay.
It is union by you. But.
It used to be solidarity though. Oh, unions press the board with Democrats, I would say.
And to be honest, I think I've been, uh, I've been lucky enough to be endorsed by those that do express that solidarity. So I, I, I.
Oh, I admire, I admire that. I was just stating that as how things have been shifting, how things change. How, how, how the, the, the work climate and then the, and the political climate has totally, it's like, it's like we had the magnetic pole was shifted.
Well, we have a situation where even, you know, uh, my union, uh, the PSEA is in a position where, you know, the focus on members' benefits. You know, those actual benefits, those discounts that you receive, the discount my wife got when she was teaching on her car. Um, you know, I mean, it paid for her union dues that year, just the discount alone. Because she was willing to buy a union made car. And that was naturally a goal of hers anyways. But the fact of the matter remains that she zeroed out what their dues. And I think a lot of people don't take the time necessarily as a union member to investigate that. Like what benefits do I have just by being a member? And because they're concerned about maybe not looking political.
Well, kudos to your wife for taking advantage of that and recognizing the, I'll say the example, whenever, this is back in the, in the day of Connelsville, Anchor Glass.
Yeah.
And where I'm talking, let's say the eighties when Coors Light first came into this area. And that was for some reason, yeah, that's when, that's when little things were big things. And now something like that, there's a, there's a million beers come out every week. But this was a new beer coming into, into, and it was smuggled in through West Virginia. He goes, came across country and, and West Virginia had it first. And if you had it in, and then, you know, you had it in your bar, it was like, whoa. You know, people, people showed up just to have a Coors Light. But they advertised the Silver Bullet, which was a Coors Light can.
Can, yeah.
And I, that's when Anchor was going strong. And all these guys that worked at Anchor were coming out here and I had Coors Light bottles. And they were angry at me. They're like, we want the, this is the Silver Bullet, man. And I'm like, hey dude, you sell glass.
Exactly.
I said, you're a glass factory and you wanna come out here and drink out of a can? What the, what the heck is wrong with you? And there was a disconnect. And there was a disconnect, it's like, yeah, but.
There are certain products I will not buy. There are certain stores that I will not go to.
I get that, but beer in a, in a, uh, packages.
Oh, no, there's a very, there's a beer that was uh, very uh, pleasing to me. Uh, that the leader went uh, very aggressively anti-union and contributed to anti-union causes and I will no longer.
I get that, that's my point.
And it was a very good beer, but no, I will never drink it.
You're making my point, I mean, this was like, like, hey, man, you can drink, you wanna drink this beer, you're falling for advertising.
Exactly.
I mean, drink what, you know, you're making, I I don't know if they were making those bottles, but they might have been making those bottles because they were the long necked bottles. Like, like, why are you not drinking?
It's a commitment, it it is, it's truly commitment, but you know, but one of the parts of your question that shouldn't be lost is the idea of. There are situations when it comes to governmental programs that are provided to people who have um, experienced. You know, who are experiencing poverty that, you know, are pushing them in a situation where it's difficult for them to go. Towards careers and work, it's clear. And the uh, you know, and as we commonly discuss this idea of, you know, assistance programs. I'd like to remind people very succinctly that. The actual acronym, we use the word welfare, but the actual acronym is ten. And it, and the first letter of that is temporary and that it is supposed to be temporary, it's not something that's supposed to be lifelong. And I do think that our.
For generational.
Or generational, and I do think that our, our federal government really needs to push. In a more bipartisan way, or maybe I should use the word non-partisan way. Uh, greater efforts to realize what those individuals need in order to lead. The assistance in a very fixed period of time.
Well, that's why when you asked, what do I think that this county needs, obviously, and you're referring to what I said, I mean. Even if we brought the jobs here.
There are individuals who would find it difficult to go obtain them.
Right, I'm not saying that everybody, but or even the majority, but for enough people that to make a, a large difference. We need to start educating the, the people that live here.
And I think that one, you you know, we, we are in a scenario too where. We're going to have to start changing, when an individual has shown that they. Okay, so we'll use the, we'll use the example that's floating around Fayette County when it comes to uh, different companies that were having challenges. Hiring people because of drug use. I believe that. If you really, really boil it down to the way human beings act and think, if that individual actually did apply for a job. I question whether that is the first step towards success and that. The testing and demonstrating to them that their drug use is in the way of that. Is something that we have to be really honest about as a culture and we have to be honest about it in two ways, we have to be honest. At the very young to help them understand that if you are making a choice between drug use, a job and a good career. You may have a mental illness, you may actually need mental health, you may actually may need basic therapy. You may, you may be in some gradation there. Or you're making, you're, you've made an incredibly dangerous choice.
Mental health, uh, the argument couldn't, is it some environmental can be triggered environmentally because. Think about how this area was, oh, let's say in the sixties, how it boomed. Even in the seventies, then then the rug was pulled out from this area and then it still took a couple of decades really till everything died. But then it imploded and and the people that were left behind. The 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 life, life around here for many is is a life of despair.
It's, so you think that your neighborhood being full of light actually makes you hopeless and less willing to, you know. Think that the world could be better, if that's the only few blocks you see every single day?
Unfortunately, I I think some people are that narrow minded, not narrow, maybe not narrow minded, maybe let's, let's just see. Uh, tunnel vision, they just see their lives and they don't see outside of their lives.
That's why, you know, that's why you have to help them travel in their minds to realize that something better is truly there.
Yeah, so uh, testing for for these jobs and if they fail the test, I think was.
If they fail the test, then we have to be there, we need, we need to be there as, with the employer. With mental health and with drug and alcohol present to be able to say, I'm sorry, I'm not giving you this job.
Yeah, here, let's, let's try and help you.
Yes, they're ready for you.
Instead of turning you, turning them away.
Yeah.
And just creating more, more uh, despair and 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 uh, and self-loathing.
Exactly.
Let's, we, yeah, we, the, the confidence level needs to be, needs to be built up.
And say, here's, we have confidence in the people who work at these two organizations to such a degree that we're gonna have him, them here present. So that as I'm telling you that you can't have this job because of your drug use, I'm also telling you. I am absolutely one hundred percent ready to hire you the minute you receive the help that these folks provide.
Right.
I am, and why, why couldn't I sign a job offer right then and say, hey, you go over there, guess what? One year clean, come back to me.
Well, that link to the chain's missing, there, there, there.
That's, and that doesn't require tax increases or tax dollars, that just requires having the right personnel in the right place at the right.
Right, exactly.
That's it, it's all, and I've been talking about this basic concept of being able to say, um. I want to put the right people in the right place at the right time. Because we've already had this rumor float around Fayette County twice, if it happens a third time, shame on us, shame on us. Because we've already had this rumor float around about two different businesses in Fayette County that people couldn't get jobs because of their drug use. Then, third time, shame on us. We should have had the right personnel in the right place at the right time at that job fit, at that, um, at that hiring.
Yeah, and and, I mean, I'm, I'm on the same page with you, we can't, we can't uh, we can't shame these people, we can't shame. I mean, but a lot of people feel shame with that, if they, if they, or or, or or a lot of people look, uh, a lot of people look down. At somebody that can't pass a drug test, you know.
And it, it, and that's where we have to take the stigma away from simple counseling. Because you, you, you know, you have to be honest with the person and say, I want you to be a success. And there are going to be people who aren't going to want you to be a success and we should probably talk about this and help you through it. Because there are people out there who are just mean and disagreeable and I wanna prepare you for them.
Well, you know, even, even in a small operation like Hutch's here, I've, I've given uh, people second and third chances that. That honestly, some of them didn't deserve it and uh, I, in some instances, I was, I, I was. Paid back uh, with a friendship and a good employee and other, other instances, I, I was burned. But that's life, you have to be able to.
It's hard.
But but even, even given the second chances, uh, that doesn't happen nearly enough.
I um, we, I argue with people all the time about this concept of uh. How many people are present in Fayette County who are struggling with poverty? And I always try and help people to understand that our population. Since the nineteen eighties, we've dropped about thirty thousand people, right, and that was what you were discussing with that idea of the, the. Really that last bell.
Rapid decay.
Their rapid decay, and so that thirty thousand people, these are people who left in order to find jobs. Um, they mostly left because they have a job somewhere else.
Let's be, I mean, I'm, I'm, uh, let's be realistic too, there were more than thirty thousand people left. Quite a lot of people, quite more than that left, but in their. In their, while they were, while they were abandoning this area, there were a lot of slumlord types that bought a lot of. These, these empty homes and used HUD to bring in a lot of people that either were down on luck or homeless or. Just weren't from this area that 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 they were being relocated.
Yes.
And so you say we lost thirty thousand, well, we've probably lost.
We probably lost, you, and you're right, we probably lost closer to fifty.
Yeah, and then, and then so we have twenty thousand people that were relocated here, which is no, no fault of their own, but. But.
They're looking for the cheapest opportunity.
Trying, they were being put, they were being homed here by by uh, uh, low income housing.
And and some folks that were probably a little nefarious.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna say that because I don't know them and I don't wanna judge anybody, but uh, let, let's just, you know, if we're gonna be realistic. We, when Fayette County had lost all of its jobs, anybody that, no, well, let's put it. Anybody that had anything. To, to, to lose, that could still be, that could still be um, employed, they had to leave.
Yes.
But what was left behind, but, but empty buildings. And there's always people that uh, are, you know, know.
They can see how to make that a profitable opportunity.
Right.
And so now we end up in this scenario where those homes that they couldn't actually do that to are blighted, burning down.
Right.
Danger to our firemen and and, you know, first responders and, yeah.
And so our.
It's bad.
I, I mean, I think there's a lot more to it than just, you know, if you just, like, you asked me, what would I say? Get jobs and educate people, but we also have to build the infrastructure, we also have to start, I mean, there, there.
And that was probably the way that I should follow that up, is the idea that there are certain uh, there are certain areas. I pers- I personally look a lot at the southern side of uh, forty-three. That um, you know, the purpose of building forty-three between Morgantown and Pittsburgh was that it was gonna open up those areas for development. Well, we are open to Morgantown, we've been open to Morgantown, Morgantown's one of the top ten fastest growing small cities in America. But yet it's not exploding across our border because of lack of sewage, lack of water, um. And as I've been preaching since day one of this, uh, and people are sick and tired of hearing me saying it, high-speed internet access. And that high-speed internet access isn't just in the location for the business. It needs to be in the locations of where our homes are, because the modern workplace is where you actually come home and you're still working.
Do you mean, when you, when you say hi, high-speed access, do you mean uh, availability for, or do you mean just?
Uh, you, you, when it comes to the idea of infrastructure in a business park, you're going to have. Your, your new language is when you say sewage, water, gas, power, boom, high-speed internet access. That has to be infrastructure, that is the new word that has to be incorporated in that exact sentence every single time. It, it, that cannot be, that has to be immovable from now till the future.
I'm in the process of, of changing my POS system here and I'm upgrading to a, uh, a much more modern system. Uh, it's called Toast, uh, there's several new restaurant, tablet-based.
Yeah, yeah.
But uh, everything is in the cloud.
Absolutely.
And, you know, the system I have now has a big old server in the back and, and uh, it, 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 it's. It's archaic compared to what today's standards, it's about ten, ten or eleven years old.
The uh, I, so I guess this is uh, the, the joke, um, so go to the cloud, this is October fourth. September third, I'm, I'm completely, so I go to Google Docs and I type in October. Third and we will see, to talk about the cloud, September third. Man, I told you, it's been a rough campaigning day, I need to have someone standing beside me telling me what day it is.
But what I'm getting at.
I mean Dunbar, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it, so, uh, what I can tell you how dangerous this is, is that I can grab. Right now, um, I can actually tell you what I was teaching the last year I taught. On September third, I was uh, I was going over anthropology, archaeology, political science. Law and journalism with my kids to help them understand how that was incorporated into history. Because it still sits on the cloud and I can still grab it on my phone. You know, like you, and you're in a situation where it, what happens to your business one night? When a pole goes down and and you don't have access to that cloud.
This is what I was, this is what I was getting at, you know, whenever I said, uh, I, I, they said, you have uh, internet wifi, I said, of course. But they're like, you know, I said, but I don't have, it's not like everywhere, it's like some, you know, some. You know, they're used to dealing in, 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 in urban areas and, and in, in college towns, stuff where it's just, there's this, there's this wifi. You know, you just, you just ride it.
Exactly. Have you ever gone to cities where you'll see the um, the passwords in chalk out on the sidewalk? Oh, it's hysterical, people, kids, college towns, if there's a business and they, they break into the uh, into the wifi, they'll write in chalk. The actual password on this, so that when you're there, you can stand outside and actually, you don't have to go into the business, you can just see, you can just add the password right there. Because it's in chalk outside, I'm like, you kid, that's, that's, that's just wrong, naughty, naughty college kids, naughty, naughty college kids. Um, but yeah, we're in that scenario where we, when we talk about infrastructure, that has to be. The infrastructure in place for the business, but we also can't forget that it has to be located in our neighborhoods too. Because so many people, you will be taking, you will be taking work home with your new P L, uh, P L S. And you will be accessing the cloud from home, just as much as you're doing it from the business.
Oh, much more, I, I dare say, I'll, I mean, I, I look at it all the time, but well, the, the, the new system has. So many more amenities than 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 the old system, I just, sure, it, it, it looks the same. Sort of.
Sure.
But uh.
There'll be a learning curve.
Oh, it'll be a very large learning curve, but, but the uh, things I, I mean, it does.
So kids and adults.
Things I can track, things I can.
Will circle right around to the idea that a successful businessman still has to be in a position where he's constantly learning. And he's constantly doing new things and you have to be in that same position. So that you're constantly ready for the changing job market or the changing of the job you currently have. And this successful gentleman just basically demonstrated it with that example. So everybody who listens has to be in the same boat and understand, this isn't gonna be your job for forty years. You're going to have to change, you, you gave the absolute most beautiful example of this to me. I mean.
I have to, I, I, do I wanna say I was a little bit nervous, well, no, a little intimidated? Maybe a smidge, but I, but really, I, I, I'm kinda looking forward to it, but at the same time, it uh. I'm thinking, do I want to go through, cause when I first did this one, it was a, it was a, it was a, took a couple of months to get everything set up. Now that I'm gonna do this all over again.
And then there'll be errors.
And they give me five to six weeks to, to they, they allow me to, you know, work with them and, yeah, sure, I, I, I know what's going to. I know what I'm, I'm up against.
Well, you know, like, one of the things, when I was working at Teletext uh, down in Morgantown, um, as training manager. When we were opening the site, everyone, everyone on each one of the individual projects was trained uh, exactly the same. Uh, and there, there's a certain element of company training that occurs when it comes to dress attire, you know, timeliness. Employment, education, it's very brief, and then you're pretty much training them directly for what Verizon wants them to do or what Citibank wants them to do. We had a um, an, an, one of the very first uh, uh, non-brick and mortar banks. Had no brick and mortar function whatsoever, it was called Wingspan, and then we had Gately Computers, and when you're working with these, you're training them for the job they're about to do. But over the course of six weeks, eight weeks, there are minor changes. So you would have to bring them back into training and do what was called up-training. And say, okay, your job, no nervous, don't be nervous, your job has not changed. But this five minutes of your day has changed and so I'm only gonna take this hour and we're only gonna talk about this five minutes. And I always used to joke with my trainers, cause I would fluctuate between twenty-four and and eight trainers. And I would always joke with my trainers and say, don't make them scared, okay, the world didn't just end and everything didn't just change. But also be respectful to the fact that they actually have to unlearn something. Over the past six weeks, they've turned that into a habit, right? They've turned that into uh, an internal sense of automation in doing it, and now you're asking me to change that, so please be sensitive to it. You know, because you are training them on a new little section and it's not gonna take long. But also be compassionate to the fact that they're going to walk in saying, yeah, I just had that down, that was all just cool and. And that, you taught me that six weeks ago, and yeah, okay, yes, please get it out, get it all out. Because, yes, we are asking you to kind of unlearn something and do something new and replace it, and they're not puzzle pieces, they're human beings. So be kind about it, you know, and um. And um. And when you're doing a thousand people, you know, in the course of like five days. I apologize. Uh, you know, across five days, you end up in that situation where you're like, hey. Treat the last guy that you, that you just taught the same way you taught the first lady, okay, make sure you're treating them all great, all across the board. And uh, cause you're asking them to perform uh in their job and you want them to do well, but. I don't know, it's it's one of those oddities that maybe we don't take the time to do that with every human being. And then what must it be like for a person who's just coming out of a struggle? You know, like maybe that's what we need to be thinking about is the idea of saying, this individual. Like we just talked about, maybe second or more generation of poverty and may never have seen anything else.
That's all they know.
Well, I'll go even further and this is bold, not people, somebody will get mad at me. But um, hey, I'm running for political office, so I'm not shy. Yeah, uh the um, I. I make two arguments. One's associated with drugs and the other one's associated with poverty. When it comes to the idea of dealers. I don't think we should ever treat them as dumb. I think that's a pretty critical mistake.
Well, they're businessmen.
Yeah, some of them are pretty darn talented and I think that treating them like they're dumb. Is uh, a critical error if you're trying to fix the problem. Right? If you're trying to fix the problem.
I I never would have.
There are a lot of people who thought, think that way.
Think of them as dumb.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people think that way, like they make that error. I would also argue that they've been trained. And they've been taught.
Well, I think a, I mean, and and I'm not, I think a successful dealer isn't a user.
Exactly, most of them will tell you that. I'm sure they would tell you that, but I also think they were taught and I also think they were trained. And I think that it, same thing applies when you're looking at generational, um, you know, long-term generational use. Of nothing but the welfare system. Um, there's a lot that I think's been taught. I actually think's been instructed, do this, do that, say this, say that. Now, I just lost a few Democratic votes, I'm sure. But but what I'm, but I guess I just exposed my conservative side, but we have to unlearn that behavior. We have to unlearn that behavior.
Well, you know, I mean, there was, I mean, when I was a kid, I would hear the. Old, older guys talk about how. Uh. You know, there's the corrupt uh Fayette County political machine, I'm not even getting into names or anything, but. But a lot of them were tied to uh. Everly and Everly wanted to keep Fayette and Greene County an agricultural state. And that's why he. Endorsed and kind of placed people that were going to do his. His bidding to keep this county agricultural instead of allowing the infrastructure. And when at that time, that that was what was needed to build up around here because to keep up with the rest of.
The decline you discussed and keep up with the decline.
Right, exactly. Now, uh, you know, I was, I was, I was a young, I was a young kid uh, when I, when I heard the, heard the old guy. So, excuse that phone.
No, it's got a great ringer, we're good. But the um, I I I naturally haven't heard anything like that, but you know, the um. I'm in that position where.
But I mean, like, you know, I I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's true or not, but but it 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 makes sense if it if it were.
Yeah. I got, you know, I look at down my way towards Fair Chance, I see a lot of farmland that's not being farmed.
Now.
Now, and I'm like, I don't understand why. You know, I mean, like, I don't understand why it's not being farmed.
Well, isn't there a lot of farmland across the country that hasn't been been farmed?
Yeah, and I just don't, I I'm I'm a little bit like, that that's befuddles me.
Control the pricing, it's a, right, well, yeah. You know, I don't know if I understand all that baloney, I think that's that's, some people can make money and others can't.
I'm like, you know, when I see the amazing success of s- some farms in this area. Um. And then other farms that are completely vacant. I question, do we have the correct infrastructure to. Utilize those farms and then ship it out of here? Like, is it, is it an infrastructure issue?
You have to have farmers, you have to have people that want. To 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 do the farming instead of, you know, if if the land's in the right area. Uh, they're, they're happy they have a couple of uh, gas wells or maybe sell some of the property for for housing developments or whatever. You know, to to get their money out of it, they don't, they, farming's a different kind of life, it's 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 lifestyles being left behind.
I had a lot of kids when I, that I taught in AG who would have adored that lifestyle.
Well, we're just talking about the people that have these farms.
Exactly, and there's a difference. These are kids who would have loved the lifestyle but don't have the farm.
Right.
You know, they would have adored that lifestyle.
But these are also people that grew up in these farms and and they're, they're, you know, they 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 left that, they wanna leave that life behind them. I don't, I don't begrudge them, but that's why these farms sit dormant, you know?
Well, I knew, and guess what? We'll go back to the, we'll circle back to the same conversation, who's gonna harvest? We don't have the people to do it.
Alright.
You know, and or the people who are willing to work it.
Alright.
The uh. I mean, yeah, it's, it's it's rough, it it's very circular. I'm focused on the concept of. The idea of, I would like our business parks to actually have manufacturing.
Or actually have, actually have businesses that, how many?
Some of them parking lots.
I keep seeing more and more business parks opening and that's great if they were filled to capacity. But it's like this one opens and this one opens and this one opens and each one has three businesses in them or something like, like. Like we could all have one, put one full business park, I, I I I don't understand that logic, like, and we're hoping to fill them. I mean, I, I kinda.
Well, people ask me, they say, well, how are you gonna fill them? I'm like, hey, I'm gonna go knock on door. I'm gonna do the same thing I did campaigning. I, my plan, one of my weird ideas is I wanna go to Boeing, I wanna talk to the folks there. And just see if they're willing to do a field trip. Let's do a field trip. Take me to one of your complementary organizations. Cause as an example, this did work in Westmoreland County, uh, so when Volkswagen left and they brought in Sony. One of the things they did was they had, they attracted a complementary business to Sony next door that was actually just making the twos. And that was very functional for a while, you know what I mean? That was very successful. And I don't see why that model should change to go and say, okay, folks, I know you work with other folks when it comes to Boeing. And the man, on the manufacturing side, I know you do. So why can't you go with me? And demonstrate to that company that is a complementary company, not a competitor. And say, let's go talk to them and sit down and say, these are the successes I found with Fayette County. This is the space that they have open and I don't see why you can't relocation a portion here or start a brand-new section. And people don't like to talk about asking companies to relocate, but. I have to be a little bit honest, I only care about Fayette County, I don't care about where I live. You know, and I know that sounds mean and it sounds a little cruel, but the fact of the matter is, I do care about Fayette County. And if I got them to leave somewhere else and come here, cool, that's better for us.
I, everybody uh cares about their home.
It's a free marketplace, guess what? Oh, wow. I didn't lose any uh, I don't think I had any communists voting for me, but I'm a capitalist, just in case you aren't. Yeah, it's a free marketplace, come on, let's go.
You know, I wanna, I wanna change this, this is the direction here a little bit. The last time that, well, the first time you and I had a, had a talk, uh, you were, told me how. How the word, the description of Vietnam is so repugnant to you.
Oh, sure. You wanna know what I'm saying out on the campaign trail? Why you should never say that word ever?
What?
Because I believe now, the more that I'm out there, that when we use the word Vietnam. That is an actual insult to anyone who served in Vietnam.
Yeah, of course.
That's an insult to anyone who served and we're in a situation where we cannot do that. That is morally wrong.
Well, I just, the reason I brought it up is because I did an interview with uh, Collinsville's mayor Greg Lincoln and I didn't initiate that. He brought that up uh, himself, how much he, that, we were talking about uh, the stigma of this area and 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 things that need to change.
It must be attacked.
And, but he was, he was very much, I I I I told him during that interview, I was like, Kevin Jones feels exactly the same way, he he, he brought the same thing up. I mean, I didn't initialize it, he he's, he, I didn't, I didn't initiate it, he he brought it up, he he started, started uh.
We must become militantly opposed to the terminology.
Although, although I will, I will say this, uh, he's from Dunbar and I'm from Dunbar also, this address is Dunbar, but I, I. I was raised.
You're the poet laureate of Dunbar.
I'm the poet laureate of Dunbar.
I'm like a total fanboy about that.
So I did say that uh, we have to approve of Dunbar barons though. Uh, because that, that's more, more to the individual.
And you know, you, and you know, uh, you can take the boy out of Brownsville, but you can't take the Brownsville out of the boy. You know, we have all kinds of things, every little corner of this county, we have, we have fun and complimentary things.
The people of Dunbar are more of a rugged type compared to most, I would say, or 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 at least uh, traditionally, so. I thought Dunbar baron was quite uh, quite uh effective.
No, I think, but those are things that are endearing and those are things that we should be proud of. But I, but I really think we have to take an active and aggressive stance towards that. One, towards the use of the word. Two, to the idea of the feelings that that word um demonstrates. And I also think that we need to push ourselves even further and say that. The individuals who are using that word are not funny, it's not a joke, uh, I find it offensive.
Well, in a nutshell, I mean, if you don't respect yourself, nobody's going to respect you.
Uh, but I also don't have to accept bullying and um, I'm not gonna look at somebody saying that and say sticks and stones. You understand? I'm not, that's not, that's, that's not how I was raised, but I mean, I was raised to be kind, but I'm not raised to be weak. And if somebody's saying that, I'm going after them.
That's, that's, that's.
I'm going after them.
Cool, that's admirable, but I I just, what I was just getting at is, if if any, people that say that don't even realize that they're, what they're saying about themselves.
It's an eejob. It's 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 turned into, it's it's too deep into our culture, it really needs to be uh, excised. You know, this is, this is gonna be some pretty major surgery to get that word out of our mouths. Because we gotta get it out of our mouths first before we can get it out of everybody else's mouths.
I don't know how you would do it or who you would approach or if if you get to become one of the commissioners. But we need our local uh television stations to. You need to turn up the heat where they either run some uh, human interest stories or some good political. Things about this, these areas or just when they do come to report news that they, they choose. Credible people to interview. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've watched the news and you'll see thirty people standing outside and. They're thirty, thirty well-dressed, nice people, yet they grab the one guy. The one guy who just got out of bed, who's not wearing a shirt. You know, he might be okay if he's cleaned up, but he just ran outside to see what's going on and, hey buddy, come here. And then it'll say Fayette County man and he's just all disheveled and, and that, that's.
And they do it on purpose.
And that's, 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 I mean, it's purposely done.
Yeah, it's sensationalized what you're talking about, you know, it's, it's, the uh. I think that. I think that we.
They're calling, they're calling to, they're calling to, they're calling to make reservations here at Hutch's. For tomorrow's Don Monica special every Wednesday. I'm trying to shameless plug in right now.
No, that's not shameless, that's awesome. It's absolutely awesome.
Oh, and by the way, we're going to start watching the football games here on our seventy-five inch television with, with a. Uh, tailgate buffet and uh, special draft beers.
And stay tuned because I have a feeling that we're gonna try and do this live in front of an audience.
Yeah, we're gonna bring the podcast here. I, it's something I wanted to do, but I couldn't find anyone that wanted to participate with me. Kevin brought it up today and I'm like, buddy, that's what I've been wanting to do, I've been wanting to get this together one or two nights a week. Get people in here, let's do a Q and A, let's, let's, let's make this um. Part of 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 the, 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 the culture where we can, you can get to know Kevin and also. Uh, whenever it's time for the elections, I would like to do a debate here with, with all the candidates. Or at least all the candidates had to have the nerve to show up.
And it, you know, I think, wouldn't it be just an amazing opportunity to sit here and take. Questions from the crowd that are completely random, nothing's planned, uh, you know, really just. Turned it into a real debate, not, not something canned. You know, where actual citizens can come and ask exactly what they want, a real. You know, even a town hall nowadays when it comes to politics, it isn't always a town hall, it's usually staged, but. I am totally willing to.
No, we were going to have, we were going to have HTR on-air public house.
There you go.
That's what we're going to have here.
I like that.
And it's going to be.
It's very British. It's a public house, very British, I like it. I like it, sounds very British.
It's uh, what it is, it is.
Yeah, I love it, it's fantastic. But you know how much fun this is every time I come to visit you?
Tell me, how much fun is it?
Yeah, seriously.
So I can get more people to come here and do it with me.
Yeah, seriously, I mean, this is amazing. I just love coming to have them talk to the R.
You were my second interview and since then, I think I've done maybe eight or ten others. And it was like pulling teeth to get people in here to come in, sit down, and then once we did it, they were like. Man, Albie, that was great. When can we do this again? Then some were, were, let's make this a weekly thing and, you know, I don't have the. Uh, and I said, sure, okay, but I don't have the uh, the time to to put that together right now, but I, I would like to make this as a twice-a-week thing. Sundays, okay, another shameless plug, well, I'm thinking about it. Sundays, while we're watching football, I was going to set up my mic and my system over there, the mic, I have a mobile system. We're going to do a mobile podcast of of uh, of anybody that comes in to watch it, so if Kevin. Or anybody, he can, he can, we can talk football, we can talk politics, we can talk whatever we like, but we'll, we'll be watching football and uh, having some hot dogs. Maybe beer or two and and uh, that'll be like a, a Sunday thing, so.
I was gonna say, it, as, as long as you accept the fact that my daughter would be, you know, very nearby screaming at the.
Oh, hell.
At the Steelers on the screen, just so you know.